Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of August 13th, 2019. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Patron?
Present.
Councilmember Hickman?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We'll begin with item number three, approval of the City Council Oversight Committee minutes of February 14th, 2019, City Council Study Session Minutes of June 4th, 2019, City Council Study Session Minutes of June 18th, 2019, City Council Special Session Minutes of June 18th, 2019, City Council Finance Committee Minutes of June 20th, 2019, City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of June 23rd, 2019, and City Council Special Session Minutes of June 30th, 2019. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Proclaiming Wednesday, August 21st, 2019 as Senior Citizens Day in the City of Norman, I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
And the motion is approved unanimously.
A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming Monday, August 21st, 2019 as Senior Citizens Day in the City of Norman. Whereas President Ronald Reagan declared August 21st Norman Senior Citizens Day in 1988, and whereas seniors created to recognize the many contributions seniors have given to society and to express appreciation and gratitude for such contributions, and whereas the City of Norman recognizes that seniors play a vital role in every aspect of our thriving community and continue to contribute to society by pursuing second careers, serving as role models and caretakers for younger generations, sharing institutional and historical knowledge and wisdom, and serving in leadership roles on a number of city committees, and whereas the City of Norman celebrates that many contributions of its seniors, thanks them for their lasting impact on our community, and continues to strive to be an inclusive community where citizens can mature and continue to participate fully in the civic and social life of our community by ensuring that they can continue to lead lives of independence and dignity. Now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, August 21st, 2019, as Senior Citizens Day in the City of Norman, and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating and recognizing our seniors and thanking them for their many contributions too and lasting impact on our society. Accepting this, we have Richard Bailey, Chairman of the Norman Seniors Association Board, and Betty Mafucci, and Nadine Jewell, founders of the organization, to the podium to accept the proclamation and say a few words.
Your organization has made a difference for Norman.
Madam Mayor, City Council Members, City Staff, my name is Richard Bailey and I have been asked to make a couple of comments on behalf of the senior community here in Norman in this proclamation. I would like to start by thanking Nadine Jewell and Betty Mafucci, who are co-founders, two of the co-founders of the Norman Senior Association, and very active members of the senior society throughout Norman. Betty, of course, has been a City Council Member herself for many, many years, so I think it's quite appropriate that they are here to accept this proclamation. And thank you ladies for doing that. I would also like to thank the City Council and the community at large for everything that you do to make Norman such a great place for seniors to live. The work that you put into this and the activities that get established and the commitments that all of you make really make this a fantastic place for seniors. We certainly appreciate that and welcome all of your activities and wish to express our gratitude for that. Then finally, I would like to just note a couple of milestones that are coming up in the senior community because they may have some interest or impact to the community at large. First, in 141 days, on December 31st of this year, the youngest member of my generation, the baby boomer generation, will turn 55 years old. This generation, which is 74 million members strong, has affected American life throughout as it's transgressed all phases of life, and it is now about to enter into the part of its history where it will begin to affect how we age and what our concept of aging is in America. The second milestone that I would like to just note will occur next April when the United States undertakes its 24th national census. This census will be the first one in the 230-year history that we have been counting people in the United States that will record more people age 55 and above than age 18 and below. I think that that situation, by all outstanding forecasts, will continue for at least the next 30 years. So while we are here to recognize a single day, I think it's also appropriate to recognize that Betty and Nadine are really, and folks like them, are really just the tip of the sword in a revolution that's starting now and will occur over the next 20 to 30 years that will redefine how seniors interact with society in general and how all of our institutions deal with seniors. Thank you again very much for this proclamation. We appreciate it.
Mr. Bailey, that was very well said, and I know that, Councilmembers, we have discussed overhauling our boards and commissions, and I have stated, and I will state here publicly, I would love to see a senior living board added to our boards and commissions specifically address quality of life for senior citizens here in Norman. So thank you again for being here today. Item number five, a proclamation declaring Monday, August 26th, as Women's Equality Day in the City of Norman. I will entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming Monday, August 26th, 2019, as Women's Equality Day in the City of Norman. Whereas the United States Congress designated August 26th as Women's Equality Day in 1973 to commemorate the 1920 certification of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution granting women the right to vote. And whereas this designation was the culmination of a massive peaceful civil rights movement by women which had its formal beginnings in 1848 at the world's first Women's Civil Rights Convention in Seneca Falls, New York, and whereas the observance of Women's Equality Day not only commemorates the passage of the 19th Amendment but also brings awareness to women's continuing efforts towards full equality. And whereas the City of Norman recognizes that women play a vital role in every aspect of community life in the City of Norman, including but not limited to government, employment, education, medicine, business, law, religion, sports, entertainment, family life, and the arts. And whereas the City of Norman celebrates the sacrifices and accomplishments of the suffragists and civil rights leaders of the past while still recognizing the ongoing challenges in providing women with equal opportunity in education, employment, entertainment, sports, and other aspects of society. Now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Monday, August 26th, 2019, as Women's Equality Day in the City of Norman, and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating the contributions and accomplishments of women in our community while continuing to strive towards full equality. With that, I would like to invite several women to come up and accept this proclamation to say a few words. Mary Frances Lubna Mirza, Patricia McCauley, Becky Patton, Mashad Fahiz, Tracy Baker, Sandra Morforno, and Catherine Trent.
I am endocrinologist at Norman Regional Hospital, and I am a naturalized American citizen, originally born in Pakistan, and I vote.
My name is Sandra Morforno. I'm native-born Oklahoman, citizen of the United States, and I vote.
I'm Patricia, Patricia Oklahoma, Patricia McCauley, I'm sorry, a little bit nervous. And I'm a lifelong Oklahoman, and I always vote.
My name is Tracy Baker. I'm a college student here, and I've never missed an election. I'm a full-time hotel manager, and I vote.
My name is Mashad Fass. I'm a petroleum engineer. I'm a year away from qualifying to apply for citizenship, and I do plan to vote after I become naturalized. Thank you.
My name is Becky Patton. I was born and raised in Norman. I'm a lawyer, and I'm a Democrat, and I vote.
I'm Mary Frances, and I think that possibly Catherine Trent, a Native American who was planning to be here, could not quite get here in time. And I sign up every January for an absentee ballot to be mailed to me every time there is an election, which means I never miss an election. When I look at this council, it seems especially appropriate that this Women's Equality Day proclamation comes from Mayor Bria Clark, our third woman mayor in a row. And also that she has four female and four male colleagues who sit with her and make decisions for this city which will affect everyone. The most effective thing you can do is vote at your local election because that's the one that affects you the most, that affects you the most. The majority of U.S. women, U.S. citizens are women, 50.8 percent according to the last census. This majority female council is only one of the fundamental changes which 70 years of marches, protests, beatings, civil disobedience, jails, created, created for my generation and all U.S. women since 1920, the addition of two sentences to the U.S. Constitution. The 19th Amendment states, "The rights of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex. Congress shall have the power to enforce this article by appropriate legislation." I would like to ask all those women present who have worked with the League of Women Voters or with the Equal Rights Amendment, either pro or con, the run for office, campaigned for other women in elections, or any other similar action that was made possible by the 19th Amendment, would you please stand? Thank you. Thank you, City Council Members. Thank you, Mayor Clark.
Thank you, Mary Frances. It was you that brought this to our attention, and we wouldn't be having this moment, this beautiful moment tonight without you. So thank you. So it's worth pointing out that if this is the 99th anniversary, that means next year is the 100th. So Norman's going to throw down for that, so prepare yourself. Seriously, though, I'm sure we'll be putting together some sort of committee to talk about what that looks like. I look forward to making it as inclusive as possible, and I'd like to thank our community leaders here. I see Representative Rose Kranz celebrating this moment with us, so thank you very much for being here. We'll move on now to item six, the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved of or acknowledged by in one motion. I need a motion to place items seven through 20 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Ordinance 1920-2 upon first reading, clarifying the duties of the Human Rights Commission in adding specific protections against discrimination and retaliation on the basis of sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, or marital status, including marriage to a person of the same sex, in the areas of employment, housing, and public accommodations; adding promotion of education and awareness of the rights provided in the code, and submission of an annual report of complaints to City Council to the duties of the Human Rights Commission; modifying the definition of age and adding new language to the definition of sexual harassment; adding definitions of disability, discriminate or discrimination, gender identity or expression, and sexual orientation; removing definitions of dwelling, employment, housing accommodation, lending institution, real estate broker, and handicapped person; and amending the definition of employer to remove the minimum number of employees and renumbering remaining definitions; adding a new section to provide a general prohibition of discrimination and retaliation; providing specific employment and housing exceptions; amending the section regarding the filing of a complaint in the city clerk's office on a form approved by the Human Rights Commission; clarifying and streamlining the Human Rights Commission's administrative review and resolution of complaints process; and adding a new section to preserve complainants' right to pursue other administrative remedies and/or private civil action. Item eight, consideration of ordinance 1920-7 upon first reading, amending the fine amount for accessible parking, the city manager's authority and the authority to impound vehicles, allowing motorists with a disability and displaying state-issued placard or plate to park free in metered parking spaces; amending sections relating to parking, stopping, and standing a vehicle, adding pay stations, removing the bar and replacing with Dean's Row, and prohibiting parking in accessible space. Item nine, consideration of the mayor's appointments of Courtney Trailer to the Indoor Aquatic and Multi-Sports Facility Ad Hoc Advisory Group, Steve Gillis to the Norman Convention and Visitors Bureau, and Anne Gallagher to the Public Safety Oversight Committee. Item 10, submission of the city manager's change order report. Item 11, submission of the annual report of the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan. Item 12, bid for the purchase of cationic polymer from the water treatment facility. Item 13, acceptance of a bid and approval of a Norman Utilities Authority contract and associated bonds with Matthews Trenching Company Incorporated in the amount of $579,975 for the Summit Valley Interceptor Project and budget transfer between project accounts. Item 14, ratification of the declaration of an emergency to repair and replace the impeller and inlet piping on solids contact clarifier number three at the water treatment plant, and approval of a Norman Utilities Authority contract and associated bonds with Rudy Box &amp; Associates Incorporated in the amount of $82,368 with associated performance bond 1920-25, 1920-26, and maintenance bond 1920-12 and budget transfer between accounts. Item 15, special claim 1920-1 submitted by Deborah Moppen in the reduced amount of $1,750 for damage to her vehicle as a result of an incident with a sanitation department truck at 3312 Greenwood Drive. Item 16, consideration of acceptance of an Oklahoma Office of Homeland Security Program grant in the amount of $15,880.23 to be used by the police department to purchase monitoring equipment for special events, approval of a contract, and budget appropriation from the special grants fund balance. Item 17, authorization for expenditure number two under contract with Smith Roberts Land Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $65,230 to provide right-of-way acquisition services under an on-call contract for the Porter Avenue and Acre Street intersection bond project. Item 18, change order number one to the contract with Webb Construction Incorporated, decreasing the contract amount by $1,530.12 for a revised contract amount of $1,581,620.38 for the 24th Avenue East Phase One Waterline Relocation Project and final acceptance of the project. Item 19, recommendation from the city attorney that the City Council approve a settlement of Jennifer Schmidt versus the City of Norman, Oklahoma Workers Compensation Commission case and grievance in the amount of $15,000. Item 20, resolution authorizing the chairman to submit a Watersmart Title 16 Water Reclamation and Reuse Research Grant application to the Bureau of Reclamation. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? I was going to hit my button, but I guess my button's kind of always on. So I'm going to have to get used to that. I wanted to make a quick comment about item 20 and just commend our Director of Utilities, Ken Kamisky, on his continued work with water reclamation and reuse. We really are pioneers in that area in the state of Oklahoma, and we're continuing to do great things. You may have seen social media posts and even an article in the transcript about reaching 90 percent of our capacity at the water treatment plant. We have got to be looking to the future for what we're going to do with one of our most valuable resources, which is water. And I assure you, we are, and it's very, very exciting. We just need to make sure that we continue to get the grants and have the support that we need from our partners. So, Mr. Kamisky, thank you for your continued work on that. Any other comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Seeing no comments, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
All right. We have one item off consent tonight, and I hear there are quite a few questions about it. So let's go have this as smoothly as possible, shall we? Ordinance 1920-4, amending Chapter 13 Licensing and Occupations in Chapter 22 the Zoning Ordinance to update licensing for medical marijuana establishments as allowed by state law, to add and update permitted and special uses of the zoning ordinance to allow for the location of medical marijuana establishments in uses in conformance with state law, and to add definitions in declaring an emergency. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I'd like to recognize Beth Mukala, Assistant City Attorney, for a presentation on this topic.
Thank you, Mayor Clark and City Council. I am here to again present updates to our city code. As you will recall, last December, this council passed initial zoning and licensing regulations relating to medical marijuana establishments. So what is being presented tonight are updates to our ordinance to reflect the changes that have occurred in state law since that time. So I wanted to start with where our current city code stands. Our licensing categories for medical marijuana establishments, they relate to dispensaries, growers, processors, and researchers. Those are based on the state license categories that were initially adopted on the state level. And the definitions for those licensure categories were based by our ordinance on those same definitions that were set forth in the state law, so that everything was consistent. Similarly, in our zoning, we established permitted and special uses, again adopting definitions consistent with our licensing, which are in turn consistent with state definitions. The reason for that being that we wanted to ensure consistent state and local treatment. A good example of that is what's listed up here. There is a state mandated dispensary setback of 1,000 square feet. Adopting the same definition for a dispensary in that case kept confusion or conflict arising from the treatment of that setback on a state level with our own zoning. And another item that was always made very clear in state law from the beginning when the regulations were passed by OMMA is that medical marijuana establishments must be evaluated according to current and applicable building codes, and so the city has moved forward in compliance with that as well. I may have skipped something. Oh, this is a chart you've seen before. It sets forth the zoning that was put in place when the previous ordinance, O-1819-17, was adopted last December. S for special use, P for permitted use. And though there were no actual amendments to the Center City Code, we did set out what would be permitted and what would require a PUD within that code. And so in this last state legislative session, there were several bills that actually addressed medical marijuana on a lot of different topics. The main ones that are reflected in the amendments currently being considered by this council were first set forth in what was called the Unity Bill, House Bill 2612, which adopted new language and amendments to the Oklahoma Medical Marijuana and Patient Protection Act. Notably, what this act did was establish statutory definitions for these categories, whereas the definitions for these establishments were previously set forth in state regulation passed by the OMMA last August. And so the new licensure categories were created on the state level, the first of which is a standalone transporter license. You might remember our presentation last year where we explained that the transporter license was automatically given to anyone who obtained a grower, processor, or dispensary license. Well, there's a standalone license for that now, and with that license comes the ability to locate a storage facility where a transporter doesn't have their own growing or processing facility where they can store. They can now have temporary storage for the items they are transporting on behalf of their grower/processor clients. And so there's also a transporter agent license, which is an individual license for the employees of either transporters, growers, processors, that will be the ones physically moving those, that product. And so that's a, the transporter agent license was established on a state level with an annual fee of $100. Testing laboratory was also established on a state level, an education facility, and then a research facility had actually been established previously, and you'll recall that's already existing in our current zoning and licensing. However, the OMMA never implemented a formal licensure process, so we've actually never seen those entities come on a local level to locate and get a license. So I understand there will be a process going forward, and it's, the treatment of research facilities is very similar in description to testing laboratories, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. The second most important bill that was probably passed that- The second most important bill that was probably passed that affects what's in front of you is amendments to the Unity Bill that were embodied in Senate Bill ten thirty. The two main things that came out of this bill were a direct acknowledgement of the existing municipal zoning power, as well as implementation of a certificate of compliance process. This process was put in place in order to coordinate with, among other things, that zoning process. What it allows is that before someone can approach the state and obtain their state license from the OMMA, they must first come to the municipality to obtain a certificate of compliance. This was modeled after somewhat the April Commission process for alcohol establishments. It's not identical, but the idea was the same, to weed out issues where perhaps someone could obtain a state license and then still not legally be able to locate their business. It just ensures cooperation. So with those state law updates, the updates that you see in the code in front of you is an implementation of the certificate of compliance process that the state will start requiring following the effective date of the state law. The certificate of compliance process is applicable to marijuana licensed premises where marijuana will be cultivated, grown, processed, stored, or manufactured. So it's a pretty broad category. And so as we've talked a little bit about, that COC must certify compliance with various areas of regulation, not only zoning and other municipal classifications, but safety, electrical, building, construction, occupancy-type codes. So it's a very broad process, broader than the alcohol facility process that it was kind of modeled after. Another item that will, that's set forth in the draft in front of you is a storage facility. This doesn't match in title, the licenses created on the state level, but it does in substance. And the reason it's specified as a storage facility is because the municipalities will now be required to issue certificates of compliance where medical marijuana is going to be stored. We now know that the transporter license allows storage independent of a grower or processor or other use. So we had to be ready to address that so that we could issue COCs and not hold up the state process for that. So instead of being called a transporter license, it's called a storage facility license because that is the actual substantive part addressed by the COC. Another item that's in the current draft is a recommended increase in licensing fees. And this again relates directly to the implementation of the COC process. In discussions previously on this, it was talked about the fact that planning, zoning, fire, environmental, and code are all now necessarily going to need to be doing initial evaluations and/or inspections at the beginning of a licensing process. That simply wasn't required in all cases before. So we know that that's going to lead to an increase of staff devotion of time, and so pursuant to a city council request, staff did gather some information regarding the amount of time that's been invested. And so the best estimates to date are that about fifteen hundred and seventy-five hours resulting in about $66,000 worth of staff time has been spent to date on upwards of forty code and permit inspection processes, as well as summary zonings. Right now, we've had sixty-eight applications for licensing resulting in an intake of $6,800 in licensing fees. So going forward with a COC process that's going to implement the involvement of all of those departments listed is anticipated to result in a cost that's going to far outstrip the current intake based on the current licensing fee. So that was the basis for the increase in fees, but of course, as discussed previously, this is subject to city council direction and approval, and that information's given for your further consideration. But what is represented in the actual draft ordinance is an amount previously talked about, which is half of the state licensing fees, which would be two hundred and fifty for research and education facilities and twelve hundred and fifty for all other licensure The zoning updates that you're going to see are, of course, establishment of uses corresponding again with state law. That would be a testing laboratory, education facility, and a storage facility, as we've previously discussed. Again, the terminology is going to be adopted in accordance with the state law definitions just to ensure consistency in licensing and treatment of these facilities. And you will see in the last section of the ordinance and emergency clause, which would, upon a separate vote, allow this council to make the ordinance effective on the same date that the state law is going into effect, which is August twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen. And some additional information came to city staff's attention after this ordinance passed initial council review and went on to planning commission, and I wanted to discuss it in a little bit more detail. It relates to testing laboratories in the state of Oklahoma. So the new state law that will go into effect that defines testing laboratories and research facilities in terms of medical marijuana really has a lot of similarities. Research facilities can engage in testing, and testing laboratories may in turn engage in some forms of research. Due to the similar treatment and description in state law, the initial staff recommendation for the treatment of testing facilities was the same as the first decision made on research facilities last December. So wherever you see in the draft ordinance, research facility, you will see testing facility for consistent treatment. However, after that initial draft was evaluated, we became, well, we were approached by a currently operating testing lab, tested non-medical marijuana products, but that had understood that with approval of the Oklahoma Bureau of Narcotics, with approval of the OB&amp;N, that testing laboratories were currently allowed to test medical marijuana without any further OMMA approval. So this was new information to us. We immediately got in contact with state officers and individuals with this knowledge to confirm that in fact this was correct. As it stands now, if a medical marijuana testing facility has OB&amp;N approval, they are considered to be legally operating on a state level. So we had to evaluate that in terms of our zoning code as it existed on that day. And this testing facility, testing non-marijuana products, was a permitted use in I-1 as a laboratory that was allowed to engage in several activities, one of them being testing. And so they would be treated as any other testing laboratory that required OB&amp;N approval and had OB&amp;N approval. So this was new information. A medical marijuana testing lab with OB&amp;N approval would be a permitted use in I-1 right now before this is adopted. However, the current draft has a special use in I-1 because that is how research facility was initially passed. So we wanted to provide this additional information to you because it was very new, and it was relevant to considering how we might want to treat these facilities. In looking through the zoning ordinance, similar language regarding laboratories that were allowed to engage in a lot of activities, including testing, they are currently permitted uses in I-1, CO, and M-1. So with your information in your packet, we provided information on a potential amendment and language that would implement a change to that part of the draft if you wish to It's hard to see the difference in font, but I tried to actually shade testing laboratory use in red in the O-1, M-1, and I-1 districts there. If you were to adopt an amendment to make it a permitted use, those Ss that are kind of red would appear as Ps. But that is an explanation of all the changes in front of you. I'm happy to answer any further questions you might have on the draft.
Before we move forward with discussion on this ordinance as a whole, does anyone want to make a motion for the amendment regarding testing laboratories that Ms. Mukala just covered?
Go ahead, John. I pushed my butt to do it. I'm just following the rules.
Okay, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding that specific amendment.
Just for the laboratories.
Just for that laboratories amendment. Okay. Seeing no public comments, are there any final comments from council regarding this amendment? Seeing none, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the amendment passes unanimously.
I would like to propose another amendment. I know that in study session, we had discussed raising the fees to help make sure that our staff kind of breaks even in the amount of time that they invest in making sure our facilities are safe. However, I'm not interested in making money off of this. I want Norman to be as business-friendly as possible, so I would like to make a motion to amend the fees that are currently set at $1,250 to $850, as I believe that gets us most closer to breaking even and will be fair and supportive of businesses as well. A second. Okay, are there any questions or comments from council regarding this proposed amendment? Councilmember Petron.
I have a question. Not sure who to ask, but I would like to know how much the licensing fees are for a typical pharmacy.
We do not have a general business license in the city of Norman. We do issue certain specific types of licenses. A pharmacy is not one that would have a license.
So they don't have one at all? No fee associated whatsoever?
No, as many other businesses as well.
So would CVS be considered under the pharmacy? Like they sell a whole bunch of other stuff, but they sell prescription drugs?
They do, they do not have a permit for a pharmacy. I mean, we don't issue those licenses, but they do have a wine license, and a beer license, and a food license, and those all total $1,550.
Have a follow-up. So if a dispensary wants to sell other things, and I'm not sure what all they can sell, but I assume that they would have those other type of permit fees associated with them as well, and then they have eight hundred or twelve hundred and fifty on top?
Well, they wouldn't be able to sell alcohol, but they may be able to, if they are a bakery, sell food as well, so they may have a food license. That's $50.
I guess I'm just confused on why we're going to treat a dispensary different than a pharmacy.
I believe it's because the state requires us to.
Well, we get to pick the fee, though, correct?
Yeah, that's why it was set at a hundred. However, we're, we're not breaking even with our time invested in the requirements that come from the state. So the proposal was not to make money on it, but at least to get us to that happy point of breaking even.
Okay, well, one more follow-up. I think I'm going to vote no on eight hundred, just because I think that we need to revisit all of these. I don't think that we should be kind of throwing a dart at individual businesses and deciding what each permit should be associated with what you sell in your store. I think we need to be uniform across the board, and the fact that CVS doesn't have one at all, a major corporation, and a mom and pop, we're going to charge them eight hundred, I have a problem with that. So I'll be voting no.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Scott?
Before that comment was made, I was going to say I just appreciate the compromise because we did go back and forth, and we saw the twelve hundred, or I'm sorry, yeah, the twelve fifty, all of our eyebrows raised up, and we didn't, we did not think that was fair, and so we are trying to come down. It is necessary for us to make sure that we are compensating our staff well and making sure that their time spent is, again, appreciated, both, you know, verbally and monetarily. So that is something we have to consider as well.
Councilmember Holman.
This kind of answered my questions there. Similar concern, though, and I would be interested in us looking at all of our permit fees in this, in this regard. I agree that a hundred was too low and isn't covering the cost, but I definitely was shocked Saturday when some business owners visited me at work to show me this, the twelve fifty number, and I was like, well, I, I didn't know what to say, really, because I guess I was misunderstanding our last meeting when we said half of it. I thought half of twelve hundred, which is what we were considering originally. Actually, we considered eleven ninety-nine so that we'd be a dollar cheaper than everybody else. So when you said half of that, I guess I processed that as six hundred dollars. And so when I saw twelve fifty, I was, I was pretty shocked at that. I do understand where it came from, though, and I do appreciate the eight fifty coming down to that. Not sure if I want to vote for that tonight, though, because I am kind of interested in the kind of the larger picture of our permit fees.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Wilson?
I just had a couple of follow-up questions to what Councilmember Petron was saying, maybe directed at Brenda. Do we do, does the staff spend any time with the CVS-type businesses? Do we have to, we're not mandated from the state or the federal government to inspect them like we are with the...
As it relates to the pharmacies?
As the pharmacies or regular businesses?
No, we do not.
Okay, and, and I will be supporting, I'm torn on this. I don't want to, because I'm a small business owner, and I know how hard it is, I know how costly it is, but I also have spent a lot of time up here, and I know how. We're struggling as a city with sales tax being our main revenue source to cover all of our costs, and with the time spent being so significant and mandated by the state, I, I mean, I think I will be supporting a lower, the, what did we say, eight fifty? Eight fifty, I'm okay with that. We are, we do have the opportunity to go through all of our permitting. I do think it's appropriate, and I'll just say this, that doggy daycares are not charged nearly enough. So I hate to say that, but they should be charged a little more. So I think there's some alignment across the board that needs to happen, and I probably will support this tonight.
Thank you, councilmember. It's worth pointing out that at our retreat this past July, we did specifically mention overhauling and auditing, not only the permitting process, but our licensing as well. So that will be addressed, and I am sure we all look forward to that. I have a question in terms of what is the fee for other communities? Because we had, again, joked about one dollar less, but we're trying to be very business-friendly here, and where do we stand compared to other communities in Oklahoma?
Well, so this, since the certificate of compliance process has not been implemented across the board, I don't have additional information on what other communities might be doing to raise it. When we first addressed licensing fees back last year, there were several that had adopted the state amounts, which were at around twenty-five hundred. There were a couple that did more. More Oklahoma had a rate around $1,200, I think, so that was local. Some actually that were closer to us, such as Oklahoma City, had not yet adopted any licensure, and I actually don't have information on their exact fee amounts to date, but this is in the realm of some other we've seen. But there were others that were lower. I think I did see some in the neighborhood of $600 and amounts like that.
Would you happen to know if those communities that had $600 fees had as many dispensaries and other facilities as we do?
I do not have that information, but again, I'm talking about amounts that were put in place pre-certified of compliance process, so I'm not at all positive that they will remain. They might also be raising from those amounts. That's not information I have to date. Because we are actually moving on this very quickly. I'm the only community, sorry, Norman is the only community I'm aware of that will have something effective, that could have something effective August twenty-ninth in order to address the new categories that are coming online.
And that is the deadline that we're shooting for to have this completed, is August twenty-ninth?
Yes, the goal being to not have a situation as before where we have businesses that are able to move forward on the state level that gets stagnated on the municipal level.
Okay, so we're trying to, again, be as business-friendly as possible by addressing this by August twenty-ninth.
Right.
Councilmember Hickman said we are winning with the medical marijuana business in the state of Oklahoma, so way to go, Norman, I suppose. All right. Any other final comments from council regarding the ordinance as amended? Councilmember Scott? I'm sorry, the proposed amendment with the fee, just amendment? Yes.
Yes.
So we're still talking about the amendment, and I'm wondering, I understand this needs to be done by August 29th to be compliant. However, does the fee, does the raising of the fee have to be done by August 29th? There's just the zoning piece of this.
You can make a decision separately on the fee and put the rest of the framework in place, depending on what you want to do. I couldn't tell you what that amendment looks like, but it could work independently. What's most important is that the categories go into place so that we are ready to issue the certificates of compliance when the state requires them of these facilities.
Okay, so just to be clear, we could potentially not raise the fee right now. We could amend the language to remove this piece and then still vote on the categories by the 29th, and we would be okay?
Yes, that's definitely possible. The certificate of compliance process is going to go in place. We will have to comply with that, of course, but we don't have to raise the fee with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Wilson?
My button isn't working. So procedurally, if we vote against the amendment to 850, we're left with the 1,250 in the current form. Am I correct? So then we would need to postpone that part of it? How do we do that, Brenda? Parliamentary person?
Well, you could entertain another amendment to remove that section from the ordinance. I mean, that would be the way to do it, and then it would just take out Section 1, which is Section 13108, and that is all of the section on the permit fees. Or to lower it again, if you wanted to lower it again.
All right, I mean...
Or a different amount.
I was also thinking, when I said I would vote for this, that we needed to make a decision and get this in place framework-wise, and that we could revisit the fee amount in future conversations. So just to the room, I'm willing to vote differently and make this happen at another date if we can get the framework in place separately.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Carter?
Well, the way I look at it is that the city's incurring a whole new job description in regulating these businesses, and so that's incurring an expense to the city that's far different than, say, a veterinary business or a pharmacy, which are regulated by the state. There's no city regulation of a veterinary business, you know? There's no city regulation of a pharmacy. But the state of Oklahoma has asked the city of Norman to make sure we comply, how those businesses comply with certain state laws. And so, you know, we have a lot of challenges in our budget, you know? We are challenged right now to fund public transportation, for example. We're funded, challenged to fund a lot of sidewalks in town. I can think of some sidewalks along Berry Road right now that we'd love to see so that kids could get to school at McKinley Elementary safer. You know, basically, what you're saying by not charging, to recoup the costs of regulating these businesses means we're not going to be able to trade off is basically about the same amount of money it'd take to build those sidewalks. So I think it's a fair thing to do is charge and recover our expenses, and if our staff has determined, I don't think they just grab this number out of the clear blue sky. I assume that they, you know, they analyze their time and they look at, you know, the number of businesses that are going to apply and what it's going to take to do that. I'm fully comfortable with the $850 compromise, but I see no reason for us to sit back and wait. We're incurring the expenses. We have budget challenges right now. If our sales tax, for example, I mean, I think, what do we have, a million-dollar budget deficit right now, all of a sudden? Yeah, so I mean, you know, we have some serious, serious, and you just can't turn your back on those things and be responsible. So I think the grown-up thing to do is to move forward. I'm going to vote for this amendment and vote for these changes, and again, we do have a, one of our goals for this year is to look at our entire fee structure and what our licenses and fees are and what's appropriate and where adjustments need to be made. So this certainly will be revisited, but I see no reason to sit back and not move forward tonight.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Petron?
So just for clarification purposes, well, I guess it's two-part. The first part would be where did the 1,250 come up? I mean, do we have any other 1,250 amounts in our code?
Well, so I don't know all of the licensure fees off the top of my head. The most, I guess, the most comparable one, and this is unique, being that the state is directing the COC, but the most comparable one would, of course, be liquor licenses, in which case I think our amounts charged are the same as the state amounts.
That's correct. Mixed beverage caterers licenses, 1,250.
Okay, and I actually used to own a liquor store, so I remembered that being the amount, and it's actually rather high. I felt it was at the time. But anyway, I guess my, the other question I had, so you were speaking to fire, planning, zoning, so if a CVS goes and builds a new CVS, don't we have to go check for fire? Like that their sprinkler systems are in place and they have to go through planning? So do they pay for any of these inspections themselves?
There could be situations where a newly constructed CVS is going to have to obtain various permits, perhaps rezoning. Those are controlled by applications that have separate fees. In that case, well, in this case, with the COC, medical marijuana businesses are going to have to come to the city first and obtain almost a pre-inspection of sorts, so that they can take their form to the state to get their licensing going. That's going to be actually done in advance in a lot of cases of a lot of closeouts of building, so building occupancy. So this is really an additional process that's been added for medical marijuana establishments that we have to comply with on top of that.
Okay, I just see an equity problem here personally, and I feel like that if we're going to have, to be truly business friendly, we need the public to be able to understand when they go hang up their shingle or whatever, what it's going to cost to do business here. And it's just really expensive, especially when you're starting up a new business to have these kinds of fees. So I really would encourage us to sit down and have a uniform fee structure and not just be picking one business out over another and saying, "Well, you're like a liquor store." It should be a lot, because it's a syntax. And it's not. It's more akin to a pharmacy, and we're not charging pharmacies. So for me, this is something that it's incumbent upon us as a diocese to sit down and look at all of them. I think that's the business-friendly way to go about this.
Thank you, councilmember. I will point out that in our study session about this, I believe we just talked about, I don't even know if liquor store came up. We said half of what the state was charging, which happened to be the amount of the liquor store. I don't know if there was a comparison. There wasn't one that I recall. So this side of the diocese's buttons aren't working, so they had their hands up before I saw yours, so we're going to go down the line, and then councilmember Bierman. Councilmember Scott?
Okay, just FYI, 850 is less than 1,250, which is currently being proposed, and so it is more friendly than what's being proposed. So I am going to support right now lowering this to 850. I do ultimately think we need to postpone the ordinance until, yeah, last minute, the, what is it, August 26th, 27th? The 27th meeting, the entirety of it, so that we can make sure we're all on the same page, and then consider some of the other permit and fees. And so right now, I'm in support of lowering it to 850, revisiting this and talking about the permits and fees for the others and making sure that CVS is also being charged equally. But now I think we need to lower it, because when we do revisit this and we decide that maybe we need to lower it again, we can do that then. But I don't want to move forward with it being at 1,250, because that is truly excessive.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Holman?
Beth, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer this question. Maybe one of our state representatives might have a better idea. The way I'm following this conversation is these businesses are paying fees and permits to the state, right? The state is requiring that the city do all the work, so now the city is having to charge these businesses the same fee, or in our case, maybe half. But I'm wondering, what is the state doing with the money? If we're the ones having to do all the inspections and regulation and oversight, who, what are they, what are they paying the state for, is what I'm wondering? Because it's a lot when the state and the city are both charging you fees and permits, it's in the thousands of dollars on a yearly basis. It's, I mean, that cost really is just going to be passed down to medical patients and so on and on. So I hate to put you up there on that one, Beth. I don't know that you would know, but...
You're correct that I don't have information on the state's basis for the amount it said in its own licensure fees, and you're correct that the COC process was set up to ensure coordination, which does involve a lot of local reliance on these initial inspections. So I'm sorry, I don't have more information on that.
Thank you, Beth, for all your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Wilson?
I just asked Ms. Walker a question about some clarification for myself, so I wanted to share with everybody, that it would be 1,250 or 850 yearly reoccurring. So that is excessive, in my opinion. At doggy daycare, just to use that, because it's an innocuous, you know, comparison, it's 350 when you come in and set up your doggy daycare, because you have to have the city do a, there's a bunch of stuff the city has to do, some hearings and stuff, to make sure that you're, you know, not noisy for people. Anyways, and then it's $100 a year after that. So Ms. Walker actually suggested that we do something similar to that, where it's a fee of, one, where we do all the inspections, where there is time spent, and then a reoccurring fee that's much less, just as a kind of a paperwork fee. Just, I don't know, it's a statement or a question or a, "Hey, what do y'all think?"
Well, yeah, I don't want to presume a question, but it did bring to mind some additional information.
Oh, okay, I'm mistaken. Sorry. Are the inspections every year, the COC every year?
COC is required every year, which is why our initial and renewal was set at the same amount every year. It will be repeated.
Can we send a bill to the state?
Have not investigated that yet.
I'm just kidding.
Councilmember, thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Bierman?
So that was kind of where I was going with it, is to me, this is just an unfunded mandate handed down to us from the state. These are annual inspections that no other business license in Norman is required to have, and if we're already running at only about 10% of the cost that it's costing us to administer this program, can someone clarify this collected to date? What is the start date from that? Is that July 1? Or January 1?
And I can't speak for all departments. A lot of that, of course, came from the Planning and Development Department. Our ordinance was passed, I think, December 11th, 2008 initially. However, applications and inquiries, building permits and otherwise, came in well in advance of that. So I do think that the time investment would go back at least as early as July, as you said.
Okay, so the 66,000 worth of staff time spent to date, that is since January 1 or July 1? Do we know?
I would hate to presume. I'm going to ask.
Okay, that's fine. I'm really just trying to get a scope of how big of a deficit we're running and how long we're going to be running that.
Jane Hudson, Norman Planning Department. So I think that that's probably August or September, and that consists of...
So about a year.
Right. Yeah, that's the zoning, that's fire department, building, plan review, trips back and forth.
Okay. I'm glad that I asked that, because I was thinking maybe it was either January 1 or July 1 of this year, and I was about to get, like, super panicky about the budget. But to me, that is what sets this type of business aside from any other in Norman, is that our hands are bound by the state to do this annually in a way that no other business in Norman is. So, I mean, I'm frustrated by it, but I'm directing my frustration up to the state level, because that's really where it belongs. My hope is that with a lot of persistent advocacy on the part of municipalities and medical marijuana businesses, maybe we can start to change some of that, because the burden on municipalities is really high. And so to me, I think we need a fee that covers our annual costs, and then the hope is that potentially in the future, if less of the burden is on us, then we can charge less. But to me, that is the distinction between this and any other business, is that we have to go back to them every year and do these inspections every year, and doggy daycare doesn't need that. As long as, as long as we keep our noses clean and the yards clean and, you know, the dogs quiet, that's it. We just pay our money every year, and the only administrative time that the city has to spend is cashing our check. So I don't, I don't love the 850, as long as it covers our cost and, you know, doesn't make us money off of it, that's fine. I just want to, I just want to cover the cost, and $100 clearly isn't doing it. It's only covering about 10%. If 850 seems to be too high and, you know, we start growing that, then we can, then we can address it again. But I do agree that we need to be reviewing all of our licensing and permits to see where they need to be adjusted. I don't think they all need to be the same, because different types of businesses have different needs and different requirements from the city. So I don't think that it's even equitable to all businesses to have exactly the same fee, because different businesses have different needs and different requirements from the city and what, and what we need to have happen. So I don't love the 850. I'm going to support it. If a majority of council feels that none of this is ready to, you know, to finalize tonight, then that's fine. But I don't think we need to go too much lower than 850 to make sure that we are covering our costs, but I do think that, I do think that 1,250 is too high. So I will support the amendment to move it to 850, and then we can talk about the rest of it after that.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Hickman?
I'm just going to channel my professor friends that are often here and say, "Let's make a data-driven decision." We have 12 months of data. 68, I did a little calculation, I had to use my iPhone, I couldn't do it in my head because I'm just a lawyer. So $66,000 worth of staff time spent, and I think all of us up here trust and believe our staff, 68 applications. Simple calculation, that comes to $970 per application over a one-year period of time. 68 applications. We probably won't have 68 applications in the next year. We know with pretty good data, it cost about $970 in application to process this, and this is even before the state law and the certificate of compliance and all that stuff that we've heard about from our lawyers, which is probably only going to make it more burdensome, let's be honest, because it's the state, right? So I'm fine with the 850, because I think that gets us close to breaking even, but maybe not really completely, and we can look at this again in another year or something. You guys can, I won't be here. But to me, let's look at the data we have and make an informed decision based on the data. And I would just paint this picture, and trust me, I completely support the medical marijuana industry. I worked with councilman Holman when I was the chair of the CPT committee to get this done and the $100 fee. But the state law has changed, and that has put more of a burden on the city. I would ask you to close your eyes in a vision, if, this would never happen in our state, but if, for example, it did, this was the fracking industry, and the state said, "You got to do these things every year to the fracking industry and do all this monitoring." Would we be up here really wanting to subsidize or lower the fee on them below what it actually costs the city to do the work?
Ma'am, we will have public comment...
My point is, I support this industry, but we, doesn't necessarily mean that because this industry is something that we support and has been successful in our community, that we have to also provide, in a sense, what one could argue, some of my professor friends, for example, would say is corporate welfare. I'm not saying that's what it is, but a fair fee that covers the cost of the city to comply with the state law, whether it's cannabis industry or fracking industry, is something that we have a responsibility to, in my opinion, as stewards of the taxpayers' money, to be cognizant of. We have the data that tells us 68 applications, $66,000, that's $970 in application. To me, an $850 fee seems to be reasonable based on that data that we have available to us to make a decision on, and fortunately, this is not something that we have a lot of control over. I would say please talk to Representative Rosenkrantz and your other elected statewide officials if you think that this is too onerous of a regulation on the cannabis industry, because frankly, they're the ones that are putting this burden on us, and we don't have the money, honestly, just to suck it up like an unfounded mandate, like councilmember Bierman said. So I will support the 850. I just think it's important that we do make a data-driven decision, and I'm saying that for my college professor friends that are here.
Okay, just a few more comments. We have some public people that would like to make comments, but councilmember Scanlon?
Just to prove that I have not been sleeping through this debate. The reality is, we have a date certain with August the 27th, and we have to do something about that, so I'm in favor... So I'm in favor of moving on that. The reality is we're subsidizing this proposition by not charging what it's costing us to do. So I'm in favor of the 850 as a reasonable figure. And as a final statement, I am in favor of the review that we've already discussed about all of the licensing fees and charges and so on. That's absolutely vital to the lifeblood of this city, I believe. And so I'm in favor of that going forward. But tonight, we're faced with the decision and I've just expressed my views.
All right, buttons or no buttons, I think everyone's made their comments. So now is the opportunity for members of the public to make comment. Are there any public comments about the fee? Yeah, just the fee amendment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Skylar. I am an owner of two businesses in Norman, hopefully. I don't think people are aware of the fee that is assessed with this. I've paid almost $7,000 in permitting fees to be a processor in Norman. I mean, so it's not just 850, and I understand that. What I'm thinking, the price is ultimately going to go down because I'm assuming it's so high right now because we're having to do a lot of investigating of everyone that's trying to apply for this, right? Is that why the fee is so high? Hours spent researching how we're going to assess this, how we're going to process. So ultimately, it's going to quiet down. So the fee is not going to be outrageous. 850, I know it's not. It's a compromise and I'm thankful for that. It just needs... What's the word I'm looking for? I guess fair for businesses because that's a lot of money. It really is, especially on a yearly basis, just to be open here. I will tell you, as someone that was going to move to the West Coast because Oklahoma is very stifled, it is cheaper for me to open a business in California than it is to open one here. It's easier, regulation's easier, and you would think the opposite because it is the state everyone wants to go to. So just keep that in the back of your mind.
Skylar, could you please tell us your last name for our minutes?
Collins.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff French. And on this particular amendment, my only... I actually just have a question regarding the $66,000 worth of labor spent. Do we know if that was all on applications that were only for permitted uses in their zone? Or does it also include hours spent on special use applications, which are much more intensive?
It includes it all, I have been told.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve Ellis, 633 Reed Avenue, Ward 4. I'm one of Councilmember Hickman's professor friends. I think the important thing really is that we do a data-driven decision. And I think it's also important to realize that we're looking at new changes tonight that even go beyond what we spent before. I mean, if we spent 970 per application and the state is actually making our job more onerous, that suggests to me that the 1250 is going to be closer to covering our costs than the 850. And frankly, I don't think Norman should be concerned merely about business friendliness. We've got to be concerned about covering our costs. I mean, I would hope that businesses would want to do their, you know, sell their wares, perform their function in a town that is governed well enough to where it isn't just subsidizing everyone who comes along. And I do think that Norman should revisit many of its fee structures. I would like to hear a commitment from the city council that they're willing to adjust them up as well as down because business friendliness really is an issue. We should be covering our costs. If we're going to behave like a smart business, we should do what smart businesses do. A smart business would keep this at 1250 until we knew the total tab for all the rest of the stuff that's going to be coming down the pike from the state. Thanks.
Lauren Lackey, Ward 4. I first want to say it's a little frustrating with all these questions, good questions you guys have and there not being the data collected, you know, when we're making a pretty, you know, some pretty big decisions about the ordinance. But then with those numbers that you came up with, I was just wondering if there's any way of us knowing, is it similar per applicant or ones that are having bigger facilities, big grows, big processors? Do those cost more than, say, a mom and pop smaller dispensary or a small processor that is just, you know, spraying distillate onto baked goods that they're selling? And I think that that needs to be something that's looked into and possible is having a tiered structure based on how much time and stuff by staff is needed. Yes, I agree that the costs need to be covered and we, I mean, if it's less than what the cost is, I don't think that should be what it is. But I do think it should be proportionate and like appropriate per individual businesses because there is so much variation within this industry itself that it's not fair to trickle it down over the small ones when there's big ones that could be taking a lot of the time and money that is costing.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Proger, I'm a cannabis activist and I live way out by the lake. I was just going to say one thing, I do not agree with anything the OBN wants to do. So there are approved testing. I do not agree with it. If they want to do approved testing the way we agree with it, I'm good with it, but I don't approve theirs. Now you say there are 66 different businesses going on here in Norman right now, okay? These businesses, a lot of them are small businesses. So what, next year you're passing this $100? Next year, what if we got 30 businesses? Because we've got businesses failing right now. I see them every day. And then we got 25, so we didn't even raise the rate to 200, 300, 400. It gets to be a long list. That's basically all I had to say.
Mayor, councilmembers, thanks for this discussion tonight. I'm Hal Spake. I own Greenlove, just a block over from you. I employ six people. I pay tax, I pay their employee tax. They shop here in Norman. They pay sales tax. So I'm making the argument that you're only looking at a small portion of the cost of the operation or examining these businesses. We're paying other taxes. Our sales tax on marijuana is 21%. And that, nothing associated with the marijuana business is tax deductible. So if I make $1,000 and I pay $210 in tax on that, that's not deductible for my total income. If I employ six, seven, eight employees, I can't deduct their salaries. I cannot deduct the cost of the insurance of my business. I can't deduct the fees that you're paying. And you're going to run a lot of small businesses out of business. And you're going to have a lot of people who are working in the marijuana industry going to work somewhere else. So just keep that in mind as you're assessing these fees. And we do subsidize businesses here. We subsidize the construction industry. And we don't say a whole lot about that. We, when I was a kid, we subsidized the pumping stations to get water from the west side of the town to this side of town, or sewage from the west side of town to the east side of town so it could go to our sewage plants. We thought that growth was good for us at that time. I'm just asking you to keep in mind all the fees, all the taxes that the marijuana industry is already paying as you assess new fees.
Hi, everybody. Evan Dunn, Ward 4. Excuse me, I used to be Ward 4. I'm Ward 7 now, proudly so. I, I'm glad that gentleman who just spoke mentioned incentives. Let me go on record, I do not have a problem with us using incentives or disincentives to focus the capital that comes into our community or the capital that's just latently waiting to be invested. This fee increase to 850, whatever it may be, from 100 seems excessive to me because of the strictures that are on this new industry anyways. So if we don't cover the costs completely, that is, in a sense, a slight incentive for people to take the risk, to start a business, to try to do something new and recognize that the market is like the winds and the tides. It's just a force of nature and to ignore those factors is to do it at our own peril. So, thank you.
Good evening. Cindy Rogers, 633 Reed Avenue, also one of Councilmember Hickman's professor friends. I will say I'm very excited to hear us talking about Norman as a business and how we run our city business in terms of thinking about how to cover the costs to support the businesses that come. I know we're always excited about a new business, like the potential for medical marijuana and all the new businesses. And I think most of the important stuff was said, but I think one thing we're not thinking about, and that is, this is a bubble business. Okay, so there's going to be a lot of excited investors at first and then it's going to settle out because demand is what it is. It's not going anywhere. Norman's going to have a healthy demand for this industry and it will settle out just like any other new industry. So the idea that we should subsidize to get it going, I think, is a little misguided because we'll end up with as many stores, dispensaries, et cetera, as a market can bear, no matter what fees you set. And so given our budget, I would like this to be a data-informed so that we're not negatively impacting other businesses by having to charge higher fees or increase other costs or degrade our services because we're trying to feed an industry that will settle out wherever the market determines it will be. So that's what I have to say about that. Thanks.
My name is Lucas Watson. I own a property and a business here in Norman. Two things. One, I went by three dispensaries in Oklahoma City today and I asked them what they were paying for their City of Oklahoma City business license to operate as a dispensary. The answer is $0, okay? There was no fee. That's what I heard from three different places. I could go a few more places and make sure that I'm not getting bad information from somebody who doesn't know the answer, but I felt pretty confident that they knew what they were talking about. And two, five municipalities in Oklahoma right now are in some sort of lawsuit about fees or restrictions or ordinances regarding medical marijuana. And we're talking about cost. We're talking about $66,000 of cost. But what could legal bills look like if someone came to protest or challenge anything that the council passes? And that's just something I want to put out there. Has that been thought about? And what are the sort of downsides, potential large costs of legal challenges to something like this? Thank you.
Hi, Sherry Warner, Ward 6. I like this business thing that we're going with as well. I just had a couple of point out things, I guess. If we're looking at it like a business, I am kind of wondering if we could get a projection, if we were going to revisit this again. I get the sense that the 850 may get passed today, which is, you know, it's what you can do. You can do what you can do. But businesses have projections for the future. That's pretty standard if you're going to apply for a loan or be a new businesses. Businesses also operated a deficit for the first year or two minimum. So I know that a lot of startup, for when you're, for example, writing code for software, your startup cost versus your maintenance cost, you do have to do the inspections again every year. But do you have to write how to do that again every year? Unlikely. A lot of the man-hours, I assume, not entirely sure, have gone partially to designing the infrastructure. So hopefully, that cost will reduce. And I know from experience living in Oregon and Hawaii that certain businesses are going to go out of business. You're going to have half of them next year. But that also means half of the inspections, half of the cost output. So can a projection be acquired? And secondly, can we make some phone calls to other municipalities and see what they're charging in the surrounding area so that we can, as a business, be competitive? Oklahoma City may be charging zero for now, but I highly doubt that that will continue. Just like we're charging 100 now, but I highly doubt that that will continue. 100 is too low. Coming from just, you know, a random person, 100 is too low. I think 850 may be a little high, but again, data-based projections can be obtained. They have not yet been obtained. But if 850 passes today, I would suggest you revisit it again in a year with, A, more data and more projected data. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments tonight. That was very helpful for me. Oh, John, come on down. You're welcome.
John, hi, 1705 Dakota Street. And I've noticed that there's a place selling marijuana at every corner right now. Every corner. 66 businesses selling the same thing and it's down. Come on, are they having a problem? Permits? Are they even looking, worrying about the permits at all? Y'all need to get your cost. How much it costs y'all to run it. And don't worry about them. They're taking care of themselves. They come in here and they want to lower down the cost, they have a problem because they need to make sure that you're staying in business or they won't be in business. So y'all need to make sure you get your cost and pay the place. Let them deal with it. Next year, look at it. If you need to lower the cost, lower the cost next year. If they're around, they're around. You're going to lose some of these businesses. There's no way possible you're going to have 66 next year. I promise you that. I will bet $100 to anybody on that, okay? I will bet that because they're going to go. They're going to go out the door. So you're going to lose some, but you're telling me it costs $800, $970 per each business to chuck them out, okay? And that's what he's saying. That's our cost as a city. That means you need to make sure you get that back. If this business goes, stays in business, it's not going to help us when we need to take away, oh, no, we don't have enough money for fixing our sidewalks for the people to get to the business or the buses, transportation to get to the businesses. We need to worry about us in Norman first, then worry about these 66 other businesses that are running. They don't need any help or they wouldn't be there, 66 of them. Now, if you only had five or 10, I could see maybe giving them a benefit. But you have enough people wanting to do the business, okay? So at least get 850 out of it. And then look at it next year. Bring it down if you have to. If you don't, okay. But make sure Norman is maintaining. And then worry about them. They're not going to do any good if you're not maintaining. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Miranda French. I just wanted to give additional information about the licenses. Dispensaries, they often hold two licenses, a dispensary license and a processing license because according to the OMMA, if you would like to make pre-rolls, you also have to have a processing license. So there's going to be dispensaries who are paying that fee twice at the same year. So just another wrench to throw in there.
And I appreciate that clarification. Other councilmembers had mentioned that earlier. Any other comments? Is it something new? We try to do one. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, seeing no new comments, are there any final council member comments? Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, my button doesn't work, but I do have a comment. And I just want to reiterate what we're voting on right now is an amendment to change the 1250 from 1250 to 850. So I think this is a good compromise, as I said before, because $100 isn't cutting our cost, what it costs us as a city, to continue administering permits. We have costs as well. And I understand the cost of the businesses. And I feel that the cannabis industry has been particularly discriminated against for a very long time. And so I'm okay providing a very small subsidy. But not, in general, I'm not a business owner. I'm a taxpayer. And I don't necessarily want my tax dollars subsidizing businesses when we have critical core functions that are suffering while, like the gentleman who brought up the construction company earlier, those, they are being subsidized. Oil and gas is being subsidized. Cannabis is nothing like fracking. Cannabis actually provides health benefits to people while fracking and oil and gas contaminate our water. and oil and gas contaminate our water. And I'm not gonna go there right now. However, I just wanted to comment on that because I don't, like, appreciate the, they're just very different. And so, anyway, what we're voting on right now is to change it in this language that we're talking about, that we're going to vote on later. This is an amendment. We are voting to turn it from 1250 to 850, which is more business-friendly and covers most of the cost.
Anyone else whose button isn't working on this side of the dais? No? All right, the motion on the floor. Okay, now that's not working. Thank you, Councilwoman Petron.
So, I agree with you that this is just taking it from 1250 to 850. And just a point of order, at what point will we be able to make a motion to table the cost of the permit until a later time and just be voting on the zoning? Would that be after? Just a point of order. I have a feeling if I was down there, I might already know, but...
City, our Madam Clerk says that we can make a motion to postpone at any time. But it would be the whole thing, I believe.
No, I don't want to postpone the whole thing. Just the permit amount.
Then, the motion belongs to the body.
I don't mind if it goes to 850, but I do care if it goes to 850 in the full bill. In other words, I don't think we should be dealing with that part at all right now.
She already said we could. She said we could do a motion to strike that section. Yeah, to strike that part. Yeah.
Yes, motion to strike would be what we would do.
Okay, well, then for right now, I'm okay with the 850 part. In other words, I don't know if I need to do it now or later, but I'm gonna make a motion to strike. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, let's go ahead and finish this amendment and then dive into more interesting actions after that. So, the motion on the floor is to amend the 1,200, all $1,250 permit fees listed in this proposed ordinance to $850. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to reduce the permit fees listed as $1,250 to $850 passes unanimously.
Hold on. Okay, we're gonna have a moment of clarification from a city attorney.
Thank you. I understand there may be a motion coming to strike the Section 1 of the ordinance that deals with the fee schedule. Because those different types of marijuana establishments are referenced throughout these amendments, my recommendation would be if the desire is to maintain the $100 fee, that that amendment would instead be to amend Section 13108, subsection T, to change all of the fees associated with the various marijuana establishment licenses from 1250 and 250 back down to 100 for additional time for study. That way, all of those categories are still left in there and it ties in with the rest of the ordinance.
I'd like to withdraw my motion to strike and mirror what our city attorney just said.
Don't make me repeat it.
All right, so to make sure everyone's on the same page, we're gonna go to council comment, public comment, and then final comment again. So, council comment on the motion to go ahead and adjust it back to $100 so we can pass the ordinance and adjust it at a later time. Councilmember Wilson?
How'd you know I wanted to talk? I, that was kind of what I had said earlier. Councilmember Petron is like, "I want the infrastructure in place because we are mandated. We have got to do this." I am willing to, we have, I think Ms. Lackey had a very good point with the different size businesses. There's a lot of areas there where we can support small businesses but not subsidize. We can charge appropriately, but it looks like we don't have that figured out yet, in my opinion. So, I support this.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Holman?
Similar comments. I agree with the comments made about looking at each business individually because I do think it has to cost more to inspect a grow facility than a dispensary. Like, I just can't imagine it not costing more. And so, the idea that we would charge the same fee for dispensary as a grow or even a processor, I just think those three entities specifically, and then you add research facility and, I think that, I don't think those each require the same amount of staff time. I could be wrong. Maybe they all do, but I would like to know going forward. And so, I will definitely be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Scott?
Yes, so, I don't want to strike the entire portion about the fee, and I'm sorry because we do have costs as a city to do this. And I agree with Madam Lackey that it needs to be appropriate and proportional to the small business, to the growers, to what you are doing in the industry. However, we have to, I'm not sure when we could revisit all of those things. And so, I'd like to postpone this entire bit, this item, for the next two weeks and have a study session next week if we have the, if staff has the ability to host a study session next week where we can discuss this and make a more informed decision in two weeks. I know, I'm being difficult, but it's necessary, I think, to consider what has been said. So, and I'm just not prepared to completely strike this section because I'm not sure when we would revisit it because it's been about a year and we are clearly not covering the cost.
Is there a second?
Wait, I can't, I didn't make a motion because we're in the middle of a motion to strike.
Motion to postpone, I believe, supersedes all motions.
Okay, motion to postpone for two weeks. Okay, thank you.
This is exciting. All right, this is government, and I commend my colleagues for wanting to do a good job on this. It's complicated. We've covered how the state has handed down what we're supposed to do and try and fund it. And I'm sure staff might be a teensy bit frustrated that we have had study sessions on this, but we are going to do it again to make sure we can do it right. So, is there any discussion on the motion to postpone? Councilwoman Petron?
I just want to say that I would support that. Thank you.
And we have public comment on the motion to postpone. You can just give me a thumbs up. Okay. Just kidding. All right, come on up.
I just want to clarify, is this postponing just the discussion about fees or is this postponing the entire zoning thing? All of it? Until when?
August 27th. That's our deadline.
And is the public allowed at study sessions for input?
Oh, yeah. We don't allow public or comment at study session, but you're allowed to attend.
Okay.
You can email all of us, grab us afterwards.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no consent. And there's no votes in study sessions. That's why we don't usually allow comment.
Me again. Just a quick, I'll support the motion to postpone because I definitely don't support the idea that we'll just do something now and promise to do it later because I'm still waiting. It's been a long time for us to revisit the impact fees, and that was a promise a long time ago.
Let's stay on target with this one.
I'm just telling you why. I would rather us have it figured out rather than to make some promise that may or may not come to fruition.
Thank you.
Sorry. I guess I don't...
Identify yourself again.
Lucas Watson. Yeah, sorry. I guess I don't understand why you need to postpone the whole thing if there's an option on the table to move the fees, to keep the fees the same, sorry, and then readdress that at your next city council meeting after you've had time to do a study session, but still at least get the zoning stuff in place right now so that businesses can, you know, move forward with their business and the decisions they need to make. Could you not put it on the agenda for next month's city council meeting to discuss the fees again?
We're hoping to bring it back in two weeks.
Yeah.
That's the next council meeting.
Oh, two weeks. Okay. I didn't understand that.
No worries. We're in public comment. We're in public comment, friends.
Thank you again. Some of you know me. I'm retired from the Foreign Service. I was a budget officer for a long time. And the government is not a business. It works for the public good. In Colorado, marijuana in stores has become so expensive that the underground market has reemerged, and the cities and the state are not getting a cent from that. So, as you're examining this next week in your study session, I would ask you to keep that in mind. You want to keep this business legal, and you don't want to make it attractive for criminals to come in here again. Thank you.
John Hi, 1705 Dakota Street. I commend each of you, taking the time out, getting the data you need to have to make the right decisions. That's where we start making wrong decisions, when we don't do that and moving ahead on things. And not bringing something else up, but a while back, y'all made that decision before, and you made the right decision. You played out 30 days, and you waited it out, and you figured out a lot more about it. So, I got a feeling that when y'all, now y'all are into it. All y'all gonna go home, and you're gonna start doing some research on this stuff and figure out what it is, how much it really costs, what we really need to do for the small businesses, maybe like they do for taxes. You know, if you have a small business and taxes, they write it off somewhat. You know, it costs you less for the business to run. Same thing, you're gonna figure this out. But y'all need more time to talk about this. You need more data. And y'all are smart. If you take the time out and do it right, you'll do it right. But if you make reckless decisions and jump on it, "Okay, we're gonna set something out there", in most time, we fall on our face. But let's do it right, take the time, look at it, get the data. All of y'all gonna do when you get out of here, you'll probably go look in the computer right away and start looking it all up. But I like that. I like y'all do that because y'all representing each one of your wards, not just yourself, but everybody there. So, you're representing more than just yourself when you're out there when you're making a vote. So, you know, act upon it, okay? Thank you, guys.
My name is Skylar Collins. Back again. Okay, I want to address the zoning issue. Currently, I own Waving Wheat Bakery. We've been running for seven years. I have applied for my processing license, and I found out that I'm Zoned C2. So, I've sunk all this money into something that I may not be able to open. I'm already established separate schedule. Why does it have to be such a pain to say that nicely for me to open what I want to do? The only reason why I'm staying in this state.
So, to link this to the motion to postpone, that is something you want us to consider when we postpone?
Zoning issues, why does it have to be so complicated? It shouldn't be.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, Councilmember Hickman?
I do appreciate the public comment. I'm a big enough person to say, I've heard you guys, and I'm gonna support this motion to postpone because I do think that there are some good questions, you know, that I do think we need to discuss. You know, I've worked in a lot of cities in my day job, and I think that it's a very fair question to ask, you know, to look, and so this is kind of also feedback for staff, that there could very well be different costs associated with a special use versus a permitted use location. And I don't know if we've done that in other areas, but I think a lot of us agree that this is a unique industry and unique state regulation, that if somebody is seeking a special use permit, as we have our zoning code, that maybe that's a higher, a different fee because I'm sure that's a lot more labor-intensive for the staff than if it's a permitted use location. But I don't know. That's something I think that we need to try to break out the data if we can because it seems to me that we have data, but it may need to be aggregated. And I agree with Councilmember Holman that, you know, we need to look at it also in the context of these different, you know, lines of business, you know, whether they're growers or processors or whatever, and are some of those more intensive on our staff, on the fire department, et cetera, to go through the inspection process. And so, it does seem logical to me that a flat fee across the board for a special use, permitted use, all these different types of lines of business in the industry, which pay the same fee, may not be fair, you know? And so, I do think, looking at it, so this is kind of feedback to staff and to the folks who commented that I think that's a fair point, and we should try to break the data down and look at it from that perspective as a part of making whatever decision that we make and how we're analyzing this on a go-forward basis.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Wilson?
I'm concerned about, I do, I'm concerned about delaying the infrastructure part of it. That's why I kind of wanted to go ahead with the lower fee to get, because you have businesses out there, like Ms. Collins trying to figure out what the rule is, and we're moving the target around, and we're gonna delay it two weeks. That's my only fear here is I don't want to, I just want to get it in place so that people know what the rule is, you know? And so, but I'll support this because I do think there's just so many levels of it. And I'm gonna apologize to my constituents because, I mean, this is a very complex topic, you know? And I don't keep up with it quite as well as I probably should, so I'm sorry. But I will support this postponement, and I'm sorry, Skylar, that you're in this mess. But I know that it'll be a good, wonderful ordinance when it actually gets done here.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Holman?
I was just gonna say, I do have some concerns about the zoning portion as well that were brought up to me over the weekend by some business owners. And specifically, the processing part in regard to making pre-rolls and special use. My concern is, is every dispensary in Norman going to have to come and get a special use permit because they're all located in commercial strip malls? And if they have a processing license, they would then need a special use from the city for processing. So, that is a concern that's been brought up this weekend to me and is something I have asked staff to get some clarity on and partly why I do support this postponement. I think in two weeks, we should be able to get that figured out. I have talked to several dispensaries that don't agree on the requirement to have a processing permit to do pre-rolls. So, there's confusion there. There's confusion up here. And I think we need to get that figured out before we go any further. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Scott?
Just gonna echo what's been said over here about the zoning and the ordinances. If you're interested in the history of zoning and some zoning stuff, the color of law, you might find interesting. Anyway, so, but I am, I'm also wondering, because I received the same concerns about pre-rolls and whether or not that is considered processing, which I don't believe it is. It's not a chemical process at all whatsoever. I don't think I have to explain it further than that. So, I'm also really interested in when we visit this in study session next week, if we could talk about that and how the implications of the vote and how it will affect our business owners.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilwoman Petron?
I just wanted to ask you all that do have a vested interest in this. I am very interested in what you do have to say, so I would appreciate emails. Like, let me know. I think others up here feel the same way. This is a learning curve for many of us. So, please feel free to call, email, because we're listening. But I also just want to thank my colleagues up here, you know, public policy isn't supposed to be easy. It's supposed to be hard. We're supposed to be listening and making good public policy decisions. And pushing something through just because it's easy isn't necessarily good policy. So, I look forward to taking a closer look at this, and I am very grateful to staff. I don't ever want it to sound like I was just saying, "Oh, I don't care", you know? I do care, but I want it to be fair with other businesses too. And again, I think of this very similarly to something like a CVS. I mean, this is, I understand you sell other things besides the prescription, but most people that go in there, I'm guessing it's for the prescription. And so, why would we be treating multinational corporation with no fees or, you know, without this particular fee? And I get all the state stuff, but at the end of the day, it's the mom and pop that's picking up the multinational corporation's bill, and they're costing us money too. This needs to be fair. We need to not be punishing our local residents who are opening a business so that CVS can free ride. That's how I feel about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
I would just like to, in this two weeks, ask staff to really examine the fee. I mean, I thought it was, when you gave... I mean, I thought it was, when you gave us the data on sixty-six thousand, or approximately a thousand dollars a lot, I became comfortable with the twelve-fifty. And one of the things about being business friendly is not just fees. It also has to do with staffing city government appropriately so that city government can do its job in a timely manner, for example, and fairly compensating those employees. And so I know one of the strategies that cities use when you have a million-dollar budget deficit is you delay hiring someone. Someone quits or retires, you don't fill that position. And so that leaves your staff shorthanded, which then makes it a less business friendly. So it's not a responsible thing to do to just starve government because you're not wanting to pay or enact a fee. And so fees are, this is definitely a, an issue of priorities. And so, you know, I know in this last budget session, you know, I would have liked to seen a greater amount of money put into low-cost spay neuter, but we could only do a certain amount because of our budget. I would have liked to see more sidewalks, but we couldn't because we had budget limitations. I would have liked to see us plant bigger trees down Lindsay Street, but we couldn't because we have a budget. And so, do I want to supplement the cost of doing business for these sixty or seventy businesses at the expense of these other priorities? And I personally do not. So I'm very interested in seeing a fee that does recoup our costs. And I know when I, when Remington Park, I'm a race, I'm a horse veterinarian, when Remington Park Racetrack opened up in nineteen eighty-eight, there were twenty-five of us that showed up there to go to work. Six of us survived. There's gonna be attrition. There's no reason this city, there's no way this city is gonna support sixty, seventy marijuana dispensaries. There's gonna be attrition. And this four-hundred-dollar difference is not gonna be the difference in these people surviving or failing. And so, but it will be the difference in us being able to build sidewalks that get kids safely to school. And so, let's critically look at our fee structure, whether it's tiered, just as long as it's accurate and it recoups our costs, I think that's fair and we should be able to move forward with it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Scanlon.
We have, if we make a decision on the, on this zoning thing on our next full meeting on the twenty-seventh, that's beating the state deadline by two days, so we're in good shape there. I think this investigation, after listening to citizens who discuss this thing, while I agree with comments made earlier and just now by Councilmember Carter about the need to support government, two weeks to investigate is probably not gonna hurt us all that much. But I am a little bit concerned and I have a question, really a point of clarification. We're going to look at fees. We've had an initiative, self-imposed, to look at fees and licensing requirements across the city and all venues. We're not gonna do that in two weeks, I can't imagine. What we are gonna do, I think, and this is where I'd like the clarification, is that with regard to the various types of marijuana establishments, we're going to do some comparing and contrasting with what we're doing versus other cities versus any kind of data that we can draw in to make a learned judgment based on that data. We certainly don't have time to go beyond that to what we may do with CVS or, maybe that's a bad example, but any kind of licensing that relates to firms citywide, which I think is part of the larger question we're going to pursue at some point. So clarification, please. What are we gonna look at in the next two weeks?
Thank you, Councilmember. Don't have an answer for you right now. Councilmember Holman.
So my thought would be that we'd be looking at, trying to examine what we think it costs to us to inspect, our city staff to inspect each types of these businesses. And so we know how much total we've spent, we know how many businesses there are, but I would, I, again, would like to see us really focus on how much does it cost to inspect each of these businesses?
Marijuana businesses.
Yes. Each of the businesses in the category, or each of the categories within, yes. Each of the medical marijuana-related businesses. And then hopefully, we could come up with a fee that is related to whatever those numbers are. I think I would agree, we really would have to, in this next two weeks, just focus on this specific business category and then expand and look at all the rest of this stuff. That would be my take on it.
I agree. Do anything more is heroic and impossible.
I think so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Scott.
Nope.
Councilmember Hickman.
I just had, one other thing I wanted to say, and kind of ties in a little bit to what Bill was saying down there, Bill Junior, Bill Senior, is I do, would also like staff to look at some of the other surrounding communities and what their fees are and how they're structured. I just do want to point out, I was up here doing a little searching after the gentleman made the comment about Oklahoma City, and we're not the only city going through this. Just this past Sunday, The Oklahoman published an article about what they're doing in Oklahoma City, and they're gonna be charging six-hundred-and-fifteen dollars for a dispensary and seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for all the other stuff, growing, extraction, research, processing, et cetera. So when we do our research, staff, you might actually have to look at news articles, because right now, if you go to the city of Oklahoma City, they are not paying anything. But according to this article, August twenty-seventh, like probably the same night we're gonna be here doing this on round two, they're gonna be voting on it and it would go into effect on the twenty-seventh, just before the twenty-ninth. So we're on almost the exact same linear track, it looks like, as they are. So for everybody out there, you know, we're, a lot of the cities in Oklahoma are going through this the same way. You know, new fees appear that they're going to start being implemented by cities because of what the state has done. You know, so Oklahoma City is going from zero to six-hundred-and-fifteen and zero to seven-hundred-and-fifty on some of these businesses. And so just to kind of put it all in context, and for staff, I think it's important that we also has another data point, try to gather surrounding community information. It may not be able to be what you, what's on the books right now, but we may have to actually look at what's in the media as to what is going to be being charged, because it looks like other cities will probably be doing similar things like we in Oklahoma City are. And I think that would be another data point for us to consider when also looking at our costs associated with it to see how are we going to shake out as a comparison to some of the surrounding communities.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to postpone this entire item with a date to be revisited of August twenty-seventh. You may cast your votes.
A vote to postpone to August twenty-seventh passes unanimously.
We're gonna, that was it for tonight, but we're gonna go to miscellaneous comment first now and then go back to our comments last.
Madam Lackey, Ward Four. I'm gonna keep that one. And just for a little clarification, I, from how I read the state, the OMA restrictions, pre-rolls are processing because you're manipulating the flour and then you're also adding something to it that's gonna be consumed with, which is the paper. And so that's where it becomes that you are processing the flour into a different product than just the flour itself. So I do think it is processing. But then I, like Stephen Tyler was talking about, looking at, yes, you know, processor versus grow versus what those, like, you know, cost for the city. I do think it's a huge, there's a massive size and scale difference even within those, you know, a small grow versus a large grow. There are processors that are doing full-on chemical extractions of large quantities of marijuana, and then there are processors that are purchasing the product that those processors made, and they're just whipping it into some cupcake batter or, you know, spraying it on, you know, their products. And those should be, not only in the fees for what you're doing, I think should be different, I also think that is something that should be looked at within the zoning. I do think that keeping a processor that is purchasing an extracted product from another processor and literally just spraying it on candy or pouring a little bit in their batch of cookies should not be forced to be in an industrial zoning, and that is really not business friendly. That, you know, that, those people should be allowed to be, you know, in the same wet place that another bakery is. You know, a bakery that puts CBD in it can be in a non-industrial zoning. So I really think that that should be looked at as well. And then for, for that, there are people that are, say, that have been doing that. You guys were going to do an emergency thing today to make it, you know, effective now. Right now, the process for anybody that wants a variance on that, if we can't get what I suggested on there, takes about three months. I would say that if we want to be business friendly, call an emergency meeting that's an all-call, that we're gonna get it all done and, you know, a much faster process because we're gonna call an emergency on it. And then my one last question or point that I want to be thought and answered at some point is, people that have already paid for their business permit, say if they bought it in March of last year for a hundred dollars, is that valid until March of next year? Or do they have to, or do they, does that get, whenever you guys do vote on a new fee structure, it's valid? Until the renewal? Until the new license? Cool. Okay. Thank you.
Anne Gallagher, twenty-five thirteen Woodsong. I was fortunate enough to be a volunteer for PAL, the Police Activities League, for seventh and eighth grade, incoming seventh and eighth graders who were recommended by either the student resource officers at their schools or their counselors. It was an amazing experience, one that I will continue to do throughout the years. The, what's really important, I think, is the community partnership that was going on throughout the camp. Not only did the campers have the values of the police department, which included integrity, accountability, mutual respect, service attitude and partnerships, but they were able to experience things that typically they don't get to experience. They were able to go to Salvation Army and do some cleanup. They went to Meals on Wheels and washed cars for the drivers. They were able to go to the Women's Sanctuary City to make packets. They went to the animal welfare. They went to Second Chance. They had a lot of service attitude instilled in the camp. The SROs that were the leaders or the instructors were amazing, and it wasn't just SROs, we also had some other officers. We had a minimum of ten volunteers. Not everybody was there every day. I certainly was not able to be there every day. But of those ten, and it's at least ten, I think it's a little bit more than that, seven of those grew Citizens Police Academy alumni. So those people are, again, giving back to their community, and I think that's really important. One of the things I think is really super, super important is to support the community partnerships. They were amazing. Our kids got to go to Benvenito's in a day they weren't open for lunch to learn table etiquette. Okay, a bunch of seventh and eighth graders learned. It was a blast, and you should have seen the way the kids actually were behaving throughout the whole thing. It was like, oh, this is different. Oh, okay, I get this. And the respect that they showed the officers, not every time, not every day, not every instance, but the growth that they made was amazing to watch. I would really love to see, and thank Mayor Clark and Councilman Scanlon for coming to graduation. We had graduation April second in the chambers. It was great. We had a full crowd. But I would encourage anybody for next year to please attend and please help out with that if you can. Thank you.
Robert Husky, three-six-one-five Chatham Court, Ward Three. I'm not a, never been a businessman. I'm one of those college professor guys, retired. Now, when I was actually doing that kind of job, one of the things that happened was they wanted to run the university like a business. So, we wanted to get my office painted. I had to pay the physical plant to come in and paint it. I had to pay them. I couldn't get somebody else from outside. It was a terrible kind of thing because their rates were pretty darn high. Okay, that brings me to this point. Who's gonna pay the staff for, to do this research you're asking them to do? This is gonna be above and beyond supposedly what they ordinarily do. Because what you're saying is this fee is to pay them for doing the work associated with getting the necessary kinds of things to get a business going. You're asking them to do something they ordinarily wouldn't do, and so presumably, that's over and above what they ordinarily do. My suggestion is, they should bill the city council.
Lucas Watson, sorry to keep coming back up here. I wanted to say two things. One, I've talked to a lot of medical marijuana business owners in the last couple of weeks, and no one is really opposed to paying a fee, right? They just want the fee to be fair and they want it to be equitable. And I think that that's almost unanimous across everyone involved in medical marijuana businesses. They live here in Norman, they work here in Norman, they want the city to be solvent, they want money to go to sidewalks and to locate, low-cost spay neuter and to all the things that the residents want. They just want it to be fair. And, and that being the case, I want to thank you, Mayor Clark, and all of the, all of the council for being so reasonable and open to trying to get the right thing done. And I'm honestly happily surprised that this went like it did, so that's all.
I'm not gonna talk about that. Okay? I think we've talked about that enough for right now. Y'all can deal with that in the meeting, okay? What I'm talking about today is I want to bring it to you, each of you, that right now, our bushes and our trees are overgrowing on our sidewalks and in our streets. And I want to make it, try to make all of us be aware when we go home today, to look at your bushes. They get bigger. I promise you, they don't get the same size. So if it is near to the sidewalk, cut it back, guys. If your tree's hanging over the sidewalk, cut them back. You have a responsibility, if you're gonna have those nice plants, to keep them in good shape. And that's what I ask each of you to do, on the camera and here in front of us, to do tonight, to look at that right now. Because, I mean, all over Norman, I'm seeing, I go on sidewalks and I see it, and no one likes to slap in the face with a limb or anything else that can hurt us. And we, and we have to stay on sidewalks the best we can and out of the streets. And the next thing is, keep your car out of the crosswalk, of the sidewalk, on your driveway, please, guys. If you do that, if you don't do that, good example is Iowa Street. It's busy when you go up and down it. And if you have to go off the sidewalk onto the street, you're hitting, run, they can hit you really easy, without even realizing. So if we can, try to look after your sidewalks. You're lucky enough to have a sidewalk in front of your house. Make it look nice, okay? Make it, avoid the bushes out of the way and the trees. That's all I ask of you. Please, thank you very much.
Any other, Ms.?
Larry Steele, seven-thirty Hoover, Ward Four. I just want to make a quick comment that somewhere in the pipeline, there's a residential lighting ordinance that's kicking around, and if you guys will keep that on a backburner, I would appreciate it. Autumn is coming on, the leaves fall off the trees and the lights become a lot more direct at that time. So just keep that on a backburner and see if we can get that forward. Thank you.
Evan Dunn, Ward Seven. There's a couple of things that I think we should address together. One of these mass shootings that we keep seeing. Madam Mayor, I think everybody owes you a thank you for taking a stand on it. Something has got to be done. I think we all recognize that. It's not going to stop them. There's four-hundred-million guns in this country. It's not gonna stop them. The culture is fundamentally the problem, and I think almost everyone would recognize that. God, this state is just, we're heading in the wrong direction so many ways. Yang Gang, twenty-twenty. Andrew Yang, twenty-twenty. Just saying, I love him, I love him. He's not addressing oil, really. He's saying that technology is the oil of the twenty-first century, in which case, I'm sorry, we're not gonna have a solar economy. We're not gonna have a totally alternative energy economy. Why? Because oil is just so energy-dense. You know, it's, I don't know if you've heard this statistic, twenty-five thousand hours of human- 25,000 hours of human muscle power is what's in one little barrel of oil, 55 gallons. 25,000 hours at the gym, that's almost, I've crunched this out before, that's like having four people work, no, I'm sorry, 10 people working out, working out 40 hours a week, all year long, week after week, day after day. We're never going to get that back. We've put almost a half billion years of sequestered carbon into the atmosphere. I love you, I love you, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to say what I need to say, but just down the street on Tonewa, there's a little cute little bungalow Airbnb. They have, their entire front yard is just full of growth, must be three feet high. And I imagine every person who goes there, they leave and they say, oh, Norman was such a quaint, cute town. I loved my time there. What if we did that everywhere? We're reducing the expenditure on energy to mow it and maintain it. We're maximizing carbon sequestration. We're healing the soil. Oh, staff, can you look, look that up for me, please? Please? And while we're on ordinances, one that I think we should also look up is eliminating the requirement for 12-inch grass height. I know, I know I'm getting close. And the other one is removing the prohibition against yard parking. Can we put that down? Can I get some advocates up there for me, please?
I hesitate to do this, but I will. Paul Arcaroli, 405 Garland Court. I probably wanted to say, I appreciated the, the notification and the proclamation for seniors, and I appreciate that a lot. I just had one question, and probably nobody here could answer it, but what is a senior? You don't have to answer it, but think about that. I mean, I actually looked up all the proclamation. By the way, it is actually International Senior Day. The United, the UN declared it in 1990. It was interesting. But while you're pondering the question of what is a senior, I wanted to also recognize that the same time that President Reagan announced that, he announced that in '88, he actually taxed the Social Security of all seniors in '84. So his gift to seniors at that time was taxation. He also increased the retirement age from 66 to 67. At the same time, we are looking at, of course, the deficit, and we have not yet lifted the cap on income in this country. The actual, the taxation cap now is at $132,900. So as we go forward, and you talk about issues for seniors, and maybe the mayors will get together and write a letter and suggest that we, we actually do something to deal with the, the future crisis we're going to have with income security for seniors. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, Dawson, 36-year resident of Norman, avid cyclist and cycling advocate, and I vote. And all of the other adult cyclists that I know vote too. I'm sure there are some bike riders out there that don't vote, but anyway, I've got a couple of proposals. I was talking with, with Chief Foster before the meeting about one of them. And, but what I would love to see, and Bria, by God, you're my inspiration because of what you did a couple of days ago, but, but this is something I've been thinking about for a couple of years. I don't know what the history of the Norman City Council is, but I would just love, love, love to see if I could bring some kind of a proposal, totally nonpartisan, totally about safety only, to the city council, which I'm not prepared to do, of course, but if the city council would vote on a resolution to send the state legislature on certain issues, that would help. I mean, if, if you're trying to push some particular issue, you need all the help you can get. The, the more pressure you can put on the legislature, the better. And, and I would just love for the city council to be open to that, not tonight or next month or the month after, but once we get enough to have a coherent proposed resolution, if you could vote on that and pass it on. Now, if it were a, is there such a thing as a tie vote here? If it were a tie vote, maybe you wouldn't even pass it on to the legislature, but if it were unanimous, that would be fantastic, even if it wasn't. Just vote that the majority of the Norman City Council voted in favor of that particular thing. And I hope that it's possible. And if I'm going to be a unpaid lobbyist for that or any other cause, I should do better lobbying. I should contact each and
Email each and every one of us about this idea. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Any other public comment? Okay, now we will go to Council.
I will keep it short and sweet because I'm ready. I believe what you were referencing is passing a gun control ordinance of some sort to the state legislature, or not an ordinance, I'm sorry, a resolution, because we are preempted due in November when permitless carry takes effect, the city is preempted. I was recently at the OML, Oklahoma Municipal League Legislative Meeting. We're definitely preempted. However, our staff is looking into some action that we can take in our parks and keeping our parks and city buildings on those parks safe. And that's, we're going to do everything we can to commit to safety in our city, as we do in general. I just wanted to clarify that because I saw some confusion in the crowd about what you were referencing. Yes, it was, it's, it's been devastating and heartbreaking, and thoughts and prayers do nothing policymaking does. And so, and we keep seeing these same things happening, and people, the people, the people who are committing these crimes and mass, mass murders, it's, it's very difficult to sleep with at night, it's very difficult to address, especially publicly in a setting like this. And when politicians are more concerned about getting reelected and taking money from the NRA, the National Rifle Association, they're less likely to make policies that actually protect people, but rather just protect their position in the legislature. I won't go on too much about that anymore. The most recent ward meeting that Ward Eight had was super successful. We had excellent presentations from staff about the Norman Ford projects, as well as from our excellent city attorney, Catherine, our city manager, Daryl, our new city manager showed up. So we had a really great turnout, and I want to thank everybody who showed up to the last ward meeting. And the next one is going to be in September on the 29th, and it is going to be environmentally focused. We are going to have representatives from the Sierra Club talk to us about the RF 100 renewable, or Ready For 100. That is a commitment that this, that the council made last year to commit to renewable energy being completely 100%, depending on renewable energies by 2035. I'm wondering if we are headed in that direction, and if we are actually taking that seriously. I recently returned from Minneapolis, Minnesota, from the Climate Reality Summit, where Minneapolis and St. Paul are actually, these sister cities, they are taking, they are taking action to be actually committed to renewable energies by 2035. And I'm very concerned that in Oklahoma, where we don't have, or we have been preempted heavily on what we can actually do in our cities, whether that be creating a municipal utility, or whether it is banning wastewater injection wells, I'm really concerned about what that means for our state and for the most disadvantaged people in our city. And I think we need to take it very seriously. We need to commit to solar, we need to commit to wind, and we need to make that very clear. So that's what I've been up to, learning more about the environment and how to be a better advocate. So you'll probably hear a lot from me over the next year about these issues because I am very committed to renewable energies and to protecting our resources and protecting our people. Again, the next ward meeting for Ward Eight will be September, I believe it's 29th, on a Sunday from 1:00 to 3:00 at Fire Station 7. We will have presentations from the Sierra Club about RF 100, as well as from my friend Andrew with Earth Rebirth about his school gardening program. That's all I have for you all tonight. Oh, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you for hanging out with us. Thank you to my fellow counselors for working it out together. We, we do a really good job, and I'm proud of us. We've come a long way, I feel like, and understanding. Thank you to staff. Thank you guys so much for putting up with us. I would gladly give you my $50 paycheck to do some extra work. So, thank you.
I would just echo some of that comments about all of you being here tonight. I know I've had many people over the years that have had the impression that decisions up here are already made, and it's worthless to even come up here. But it's not true. I've seen over the years, long before I was even on this council, I have seen councils deliberate. I've seen council members change their mind based on public comment, based on new information all the time. And so I can assure you that when you come down here, all of us, most of us, if not all of us, are always willing to hear new information and new perspectives and change our opinions about it. And, you know, we do have a lot on our agenda this year, a whole lot of items that we want to get to. And postponing things that are on the agenda that we're about to vote on, you know, sets things back sometimes and, and could be problematic, but I think, as many mentioned tonight, it is worth taking a step back and making sure we get the policy right instead of, you know, pushing it forward so that we can continue our agenda. So I appreciate all my colleagues for your openness and leadership here. I think we'll get something better out of this that'll address a lot of the concerns that we heard tonight. And I want to thank you all for being here to do it. So the other thing I want to mention, school's about to start. In Ward Seven, and on my street specifically, over on College Avenue, the students are definitely back. My street, when school's out, my street has pretty much no cars on it. There's only two other people on my block that live there all year round besides me, so it's pretty dead and quiet and everything. But now it's all full of cars and people, and hundreds of students walking back and forth all day and evening with rush week and everything. So I just want to remind everybody that maybe you need to leave five or 10 minutes early when you go to work or run errands. And just remember, there's a lot more cars out there, there's people walking. There's a lot of students that are here in Norman now that come from towns that are not as large as Norman, are not as urban, and don't have as much traffic. And they may not be used to city traffic and may not be paying attention. You're going to have to pay attention for them and make sure you don't run them over. So just keep that on mind. Last thing, though, I want to mention is somewhat related, and I don't know if there's been any final discussions about it, but I do want to commend our city manager, Daryl Pyle, for helping to address an issue before it really became an issue. And when we went on our driving tour, I showed him, basically on my street, there's an abandoned apartment complex next to my house, and next to that apartment complex is a pretty large fraternity house. And this fraternity has no parking at all, very limited parking, very limited parking. For the last 10 years or so, this abandoned apartment complex owner has allowed them to park there. Well, a few weeks ago, he decided to build a fence and block in the entire apartment complex, so they can't park there anymore. So we were real concerned, I was real concerned, that those fraternity guys were going to come back last week, and they were going to have no parking, and it was just going to be chaos on my street. And so I think manager Pyle was able to get, get together with our fraternity folks and the university, and I think so far this week, I have not had any, nobody's been parking in my yard or anything. So I think, I think it might have worked out. The church, I've noticed, is letting them park over there, so hopefully that will continue. So I really appreciate hitting the ground running when you got here and helping to address some problems before they even become a problem. So thank you all, thank you all for being here, and we'll see you next time.
Anne Gallagher talked earlier about her experiences with the Police Activities League. I was privileged to dance in and out of that party over the three weeks that it was held. Incredible thing. 50 kids starting out, really roughhousing, not paying much attention to anybody. Second day of the fair, Mayor Clark gave a speech that shut them all up. They were just really attentive, they really got a lot out of it, and I had feedback from kids and kids' parents as late as the graduation on how moved they were by her words and her experiences. So my hat's off to her. And my hat's off to Anne Gallagher and the other people that volunteered, as well as the community partners that helped sponsor that event. A really, really big deal. Anne mentioned Citizens Police Academy graduates participating, and they did, as they do every year, both financially and with their time. The most recent Citizens Police Academy, number 17, started two weeks ago. Last night, they were experiencing high-speed pursuits, great fun in a speeding police car. In coming weeks, they'll experience the joys of tasing. They will participate in armed intruder drills, quite an education for them. That class will graduate in November, but applications will go out later on this fall for the next go-around. And if you have not done that, I would encourage it. It's quite an experience, whatever you think of the police department. My compatriots here have already talked to the importance of citizen comments, and if I didn't realize it before tonight, I certainly appreciate it now, certainly more than ever in terms of the, the words that you all spoke with regard to the items that we were considering. It really, really does matter, and I appreciate your candor with us. We don't propose to know everything. We depend on your input. It's really important, and, and please, please, keep it up. The last thing I'll mention is the National Night Out, which was a week or so ago, on a nice, hot evening. I got to meet eight out of the 12 parties in Ward Six. Just couldn't fit them all in, but it was enjoyable to meet people, and again, getting feedback from the public as, as we talked at those various venues. I'll also say that the, this year, for the first time, there was a, an event in Andrews Park. It wasn't just neighborhood get-togethers that HOAs or neighborhood organizations sponsored, but rather there was an event in the park, AT&amp;T co-sponsored. I think Target had a hand in it. And, and if the merit of success is the number of ice cream cones served, there were 300. It was quite a thing, an opportunity for people that didn't have neighborhood or things to go to, to participate, and that will happen again next year, as I understand it. So thank you to the police department that organized it and the people that participated in it, and most of all, the citizens that turned out for it. Thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming tonight, y'all. I did, I do think that Councilmember Holman said, was correct when he said that this is an example of being active in your local government actually makes a difference in what is directly related to your day-to-day life. So I changed my own mind like six times tonight, so I don't know if that gives you any faith in me, but I, I listened to every person, and I thought, oh, yeah, that makes a great point, and that makes a great point, and John, you made a great point, and so Cynthia made a great point, everybody was good. So keep sending me the emails, wardfive@normanok.gov. I, I want to hear the input. So, and then on a different topic, yesterday, Norman Animal Welfare received 21 puppies all at once. Twenty-two, but there are 21 left. I don't know what happened. But they need But they need supplies. Some of the puppies are as young as two weeks old, and so they're on bottle feeding. Some are about four weeks old and are a mixture of canned food and formula. So if you could donate puppy formula or canned food, they say they prefer IMES or Pro Plan, puppy pads, old towels, canine milk replacer, and bottles. These all could be dropped off at Norman Animal Welfare or at Annie's Rough House. We'll make sure they get to the right place. Or really important, if you could foster, they need fosters because I don't know if you've ever had bottle baby puppies. They're a lot of work. So they could really use some fosters. Also, spay and neuter your pets because this is really difficult for our shelter staff. It's really difficult for our city. It's really difficult for the rescuers. And I would like to see this curbed. It's been a rough year for everybody. I know all of the cities, all of the surrounding communities are all having this problem. And it's going longer and later and more, and it's getting worse. So we could use your help. Thanks.
I also want to thank everybody who came out tonight and the folks who are watching at home. I just want to share two quick things with you. One, I'm going to have the honor and privilege of tomorrow going to the Cherokee Nation inauguration swearing-in for the new chief and the new council members. And as I was thinking about that, I thought about us here in Norman. And something that I've talked to Mayor Clark and some others about is our community considering a land acknowledgement resolution out of respect to the sovereign nations, the Native American nations whose jurisdiction overlaps ours here in the city of Norman, as well as taking action to strengthen our bond with our local Native American tribes whose jurisdiction does overlap with us in the city of Norman. So as a member of the Cherokee Nation, I hope that that will be something that this council and this community will consider doing. And I'm looking forward and honored to be able to go to the Cherokee Nation tomorrow for that inauguration. The second point is just a personal point of privilege. I do, a lot of, a lot of folks in our town have kids that have gone off to college, like Councilmember Holman said. My daughter is going off to college, not here at the University of Oklahoma, but we'll be driving her to Creighton University in Omaha, Nebraska, leaving on Thursday. So I just wanted to give Emma, my daughter, a shout out. If she's watching at home, she's probably not. But that, you know, I'm going to miss her and I'm excited, like a lot of parents are when their kids go off to college. And so I'll be out of town here the next few days through the weekend, taking her to Omaha and leaving her there to come back to Oklahoma. So to all the families out there that are also going through that, that time in your life where you take your children to college, I know you know that that, it's an exciting, wonderful time, but it's also a heartfelt, you know, when you have to say goodbye to your children when you leave them at college and they're not just five minutes away at the University of Oklahoma. So thank you all again for tonight.
So on that note, my nephew just moved to Norman from Texas, and he's starting at OU, so that's pretty exciting for me. And my kids are going back to school, too. We have lots of kids that are going back this, before our next council meeting. And so I just want to wish everybody a happy school year to caregivers, parents, teachers, staff. It's exciting. I'm ready for my kids to go back, too. Ward Three, we have the FEMA meetings coming up and Ward Eight. So Thursday, August 22nd at 5:30 here in Chambers, and Wednesday, September the 4th at 5:30 here in Chambers. So I know that several households received letters saying that, according to the new FEMA maps, they are now in floodplains or their homes have been removed, one or the other. So if you receive those letters, we really encourage you to come out to the FEMA meetings. There will be a FEMA representative, as well as Oklahoma Water Resources Board Representative, to answer a lot of questions that I'm, I know many Ward Three residents have, and I'm sure Ward Eight as well. And I know that Alex meant to say that, she just forgot. But I got her, I got her. Women's Equality Day, how cool is that? So I guess, while we were going through that earlier today, I was reminded, it was just strange that it happened in one day. But I, my daughter and I were listening to the podcast, Good Night Stories for Rebel Girls, based on the book. And the one today that we were listening to was Ruth Bader Ginsburg. And so just kind of a really cool Women's Equality Day for me today. And just a pretty moving experience. Anyway, I'm not going to get all emotional because that type of subject does make me emotional. But it's special that I get to sit here for that. And shout out to Officer Hawkins back there. So he was my partner for Neighborhood Night Out. And now it looks to be that he's our new sergeant-at-arms. Just one night? Well, didn't he do a fantastic job?
Yes, he did.
Anyway, we thank you for your service. And I think that is all I have. I appreciated tonight as well. It was great conversations, and I think we made the right decision.
I really don't have anything to say, so.
Well, I will take your time for you. So one of the things that calms me after my really long, crazy days, I'm kind of a policy wonk, I got a degree in political science. But one of the things that I'm constantly trying to refresh in my mind is how to look at policy, how to think about policy, to look at it from different perspectives. And so tonight, it feels kind of appropriate to talk about progress, considering the importance and impact that progress has on our lives. It's what brought us the motor vehicle, renewable energy, cell phones, expanded human rights. There's no intellectual or academic focus on the study of progress. And so, or how to speed it up? How do, how do we, how do we encourage that to happen? There is no focus on that. I don't think anyone can argue that we don't still need progress. We have diseases that we haven't cured that end our lives early. We can't predict or mitigate natural disasters. We aren't able to travel as quickly or as efficiently or as cheaply as we would like to. But we know that progress can come in quick, really large leaps, or it can be an accumulation of 1,000 small moments that, when looked at in a collective view, represent some monumental shift in what we do or how we do it. So to me, you know, we can, we can see that there are certain conditions under which progress occurs. Throughout history, you know, there are certain geographic areas where innovation really flourishes, but it doesn't stay there. It then expands to the rest of the world, and everyone benefits from it. So what that shows us is that there are some conditions under which progress is encouraged or happens more quickly. But the question remains, how do we do that intentionally? How do we find ways to stimulate innovation? How do we find ways to progress? And so the reason I bring this up is because while as we as a body, but also we as a community, look to advance and grow the collective community that we all live in, some of these dynamics can come into play. And so, you know, how do effective groups exchange and share ideas? How do we encourage an innovative ecosystem? And do we incentivize it or do we not? Are there some ways we should be incentivizing and some ways that we shouldn't? And so that's what I've been thinking about for the last few weeks and probably what I'm going to be thinking about for a little while because it brings in so many different areas of study because we, we don't look at that as a collective whole. We don't look about, we don't look at progress and think, how do we, how do we generate that in different places? We just kind of look at different individual pieces of it. So, and I also think about that in my own, my own business life. As a business owner, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think bigger. I'm trying to think more efficiently. I'm trying to make things better for our customers and our employees and as a business owner because, good lord, there are not enough hours in the day to do all the things that I need to do. So how do I progress? How do I grow? So I don't, I don't really have an intent other than that, just to say that that's what I'm thinking about because I think that if we can collectively come up with some ways to encourage progress in our community, it'll make some of the issues that we're dealing with easier to solve and maybe, with maybe one less variable. So that's kind of been my thought process the last couple of weeks. It'll probably be my thought process till two weeks from now when I come up with something else to talk about. Because everyone likes to talk about events, and there are hardly ever any specific Ward One events. So, you know, I'm trying to, trying to carve out something to talk about every couple of weeks. And policy or how to think about policy is really kind of where I've fallen in because that's just something that I love to do. So thanks, everyone, for coming and listening to my little mini TED Talk, and I'll have another one for you in two weeks.
All right. Couple of comments from me. I know everyone's ready to wrap it up after a great discussion. I had my first book discussions that I partnered with Pioneer Library System. We read Dear Martin for the teen book discussion and The Other Einstein for the adult book discussion. I had a blast. It was nice to do some self-care and read a book and not like the book of proposed ordinances and research that we get. We will definitely do it again. However, I've got some research for my own scholarly article that I'm working on, so I need to focus on that for a while. So I'll hit you back later in the fall. National Night Out was a success. Thank you for everyone that did participate. Captain Hawkins, another shout out to you. I think we're going to October, right? Is that, is that the general consensus for next year? Yeah, okay, okay, yes. August was fun and all, we tried it. But blows my mind about that is it, that's the national, National Night Out. There's a lot of states that are really warm in August. It can't be just us. So I'm fine with being a rebel and moving that back to October. So yes, the students return. When you get frustrated about the lack of parking and students in all the restaurants and the stores, remember, three words, sales, tax, revenue. Yes, I'm excited to welcome them back. And the energy in Norman in the fall is beautiful. And we've got sporting events, we've got school. There's just so much going on. I love it, I'm so excited. So with the students returning, I'm pleased to announce that the Norman City Council will have three University of Oklahoma interns to help us out for the fall semester. The Charter Review Commission is in works. They're looking at a variety of issues. One of them, I believe, is our pay, which I will point out just for perspective. These interns, by generosity of some awesome foundations, are making $1,000 to work with us for about four months, which means those interns will make more than every person sitting up here during those four months. Just throwing that out there. And some people tonight have mentioned my comments about gun control. I would like to mention that my husband and I are gun owners. Gun control does not equal taking guns away. It just doesn't. And as we approach constitutional carry in this great state, I simply was looking for suggestions on how we can keep our communities safe for those that own guns and those that don't. And so I'm pleased to report that already we've worked with the city manager and the chief of police. We will be hosting at least one free gun safety class here for the city of Norman because we want you to be educated on how to use those guns. So stay tuned. We are going to lead the way on how cities can address constitutional carry in creative ways because that's the upside to preemption, right, guys? We get to be creative in our policymaking. So with that, that's all I have. City manager Pyle, do you have any comments this evening?
None, Your Honor.
All right, you're doing a great job.
Thank you, Judge.
You're welcome. Yep, that's right. All right, well, with that, this meeting is adjourned.